Members, excuse me everybody, could you have a little bit of quiet please? Thank you. Welcome members to this full council meeting of Ramsgate Town Council and welcome to our members of the public here this evening and also to our members of the community we're watching online. We do have a packed agenda and so we'll try and get through this as good and as quick as we can. Okay, item one is apologies and we've received apologies from councillor Ara, councillor Nixie, councillor Dark who's unwell and councillor Young. Is there anybody else? No, I think we're all here apart from that. Thank you. Declarations of interest, are there any declarations of interest on the items on the agenda? Can't hear any shouting, so that's fine. Item two of two.
I'm just going to say I suppose some of the Ramsgate's small events. Interesting motion. Ramsgate's a member.
Non-peculiar.
Non-peculiar.
Yeah, item two is to receive a written report from the town clerk and consider whether to permit councillor Dark to be absent from council meetings due to her recovery from an accident for longer than the six months period that she would, if she's not here. So if members are satisfied with that and then we will review it after that period. Members okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, members, the recommendation is that the absence of councillor Dark from all council committee meetings be authorised and approved for the period until the 29th of February 2024 pursuant of section 85 of the Local Government Act 1972 and also that the report is noted, that's the recommendation.
Noted, thank you. Right, item.
Do we actually need to vote?
First recommendation?
I think you should.
The pace is second.
Sorry, in what way are you talking about?
The absence of councillor Dark is approved until that day.
Well, I've just asked if you're all in agreement and you've all said yes, so as far as that's concerned, that's, that's. That's no problem. Item three, public request to speak, did you have any public requests to speak?
No.
No, okay, thank you. Item four, minutes of council meeting and it's to approve the minutes of the 27th of September 2023. Are there any questions in relation to those minutes at all? Any comments from members? I then proposed the minutes, can I have a seconder? Councillor Austin, all those in favour please show, thank you, that's carried. Item five, finances including grants, so we have five parts of item five, so item one of five is to receive a report of payments. The council was asked to note the payments between the 22nd of September to the 18th of October 2023, authorised by the town clerk and the RFO sitting here, which is a total of £6,929.29 and approve the payments above threshold delegated to the town clerk and RFO, which is a total of £60,708.88. Councillor Green.
Yeah.
Councillor Hudson?
Thank you.
Anyone want to comment before taking a vote? No? Okay, all in favour please show, that's carried, thank you. Our item two is to receive a report from young Eileen here and consider four grant applications contained therein from Events Fund, EF18 Ramsgate Society, Ramsgate Design Awards, Community Services Fund about St George's Ramsgate Community Development and the others. So we'll start off, we'll start off, do you want to start off on it? Thank you. Talk in frivolous moods, save me a ticket.
The first application is from the Ramsgate Society for the Ramsgate Design Awards 2023, it is retrospective. The balance of the Events Fund is £5,550, that is all we have left, I'm afraid, members. This is for the Ramsgate Design Awards which were held throughout 2023 with an event announcing the winners held in Bradford House on September 15th, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. with 32 nominations, it's all there in your report. Grant requested is £2,000, total projected expenditure was £2,905.99, thank you, members.
Members, questions? Councillor Critten?
It's retrospective. Yeah, it tells you that in the report, it took place in September.
So money's already spent there.
Not from us, no.
Okay.
Councillor Green.
I think very much of the council.
Sorry to be, sorry to ask, but could we move you down to this side? I'm sorry, because of fire exit and stuff, so we need to, just ensure that. Yes, it is, yes, it is. Councillor Green has just suggested that we should support this. Besides.
One that we do jointly with the Ramsgate Society.
Is there a seconder to that?
No, I would just like to make a comment. Have we ever, ever paid anything retroactively?
Not to my knowledge, not to the clerk's knowledge, not to my knowledge either. It's up to members, it's always the first time, maybe. But is there a seconder for councillor Green's motion?
I feel with councillor Wing, I think he sets a bad precedent.
Anybody else wants to speak?
No, not seconded, anyone want? Thank you. Councillor Evans, sir.
I just wanted to say that although I was actually, I don't think that it was an extreme event, a lot of effort into it at all and extremely well, something I'd like to do to take forward.
I don't think it's, I don't think there's any negativity in relation to itself, I mean, it was a very good, I was there, but it was a very good event.
But then did the survey. I mean, I just, I just would like to put it into context that it would set a, in my view, a very dangerous precedent of paying anything just like that.
I enforce the Ramsgate Society and everything they do, but that doesn't mean I should support something that I think would be detrimental in the long run and obviously the whole event is fabulous, but I just think we're heading into dangerous territory.
I think linked in with that is the fact that once again, we're at the tail end of the budget and we're going, I mean, last year we were looking at grant funding and making grant, had three months in advance and now we're five months in advance at the end of the year and, you know, what's going to happen next? Is it going to be, well, we'll, we're taking money out of next year's budget and I think that's very much linked in with the whole retrospective element concerns me too.
Anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Green.
Just like to comment that we express support of the Ramsgate Society before they undertook it.
Yes.
So if there's no bid for funding, it's partly our fault.
Councillor Wing.
Be an element of predetermination in the way we voted, which is also quite dangerous if we promise something. Sure, there's lots of events that would like to be promised money and again, I have nothing to do with the Ramsgate Society, I just think there's a small pot of money and we need to manage it consistently.
Anybody else?
As Mr Walker is here, could we ask him for his comments on whether?
No.
You can't?
Sorry, John.
I'm very aware that councillor Green has made a proposal for £1,500, if that falls, would we look at an alternative amount?
That's up to members, that's up to you.
I would.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Hudson?
In our budget, remaining budget.
I believe you, where's £4,050.
£1,050.
My maths is not great and what bids have we got? What's the total amount of the bids?
No further bids for the Events Fund and there's none any in the pipeline either.
That helps.
This is the separately, this is the Events Fund, don't you answer? Yeah.
Councillor Wing.
I mean, given that piece of information, then I'm likely to be mindful that, given the work the Ramsgate Society does and given it was a joint enterprise, that we make an exception, but we note that this can never happen again.
Councillor Green, would you be happy to add that to your proposal?
Do I add it again?
From any group?
I'd rather take that as a separate.
Okay.
Members, I'm sorry to cancel.
That was a separate resolution because I think it was for all groups, that just goes.
Okay, well, I think that would be, as it's not part of the discussion, I think that we should do that, but we can, we can deal with that later, I think, thank you.
I'd like to support councillor Green's response to that and I don't know quite where this fits in, I actually think, given that we are running out of funds in all of the grant budgets early every year, I think before the next meeting, we should come back with something that looks at protocols, whether it's retrospective, whether or not we're paying 100%, because 100% is actually sponsorship of an event, it's, I mean, this isn't, as it happens, I think we need to look at the bigger picture, so I'd like to merge that in with what, but we'll do that after this bit.
No?
No, I mean, after.
We'll do it at another meeting, we won't do that.
No, 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 I mean, yeah, yeah, all right.
Okay.
I'm just trying to say that.
Okay, we have a proposal and it's been seconded, but could you just read the proposal out?
It's £1,500.
All those in favour please show. That's carried, thank you. All right, item two of five, to receive a report from, Eileen, you all right doing that?
I'm fine. Members, this is the community services budget, which is £30,000, you have £5,239.5 left, you have a total of applications at £11,000, so this is one that you need to really think about. The first application is a new one, these haven't applied before and it's St George's Ramsgate Community Development Trust and it's for St George's Community Meals, I think members are aware of these. Expenditure is £7,150 and they are asking for £3,500. Every Tuesday they have a meal, like a meal club, which allows those who struggle with isolation, homelessness and hunger to join on a weekly basis to enjoy a cooked meal and conversation. Thank you.
Members? Councillor Critten?
I know this fairly well, it is obviously in East Cliff Ward and as it happens, not because it was on the agenda today, I actually went to the meal last night as a volunteer and managed to have a meal there.
Any chance for free meal, I know.
I did, the volunteers got a free meal on the night if you want to. It's been running for several years in various ways, I don't think they've ever come to us for funding before, but it has been going for quite a while, it was linked in with Into Shelter for a while, most of the volunteers, if they remember it. I'm not quite sure where all of their funding has come from before, but I can say that there are a number of people that are quite regular there and the volunteers work with them to support them in various ways, they do a lot of good work basically, so yeah, I would like to support this.
Anybody else? Councillor Green.
I know this is a very worthy thing, but a community service budget was designed for things that were going to go. So that's a, that would be expected of us for this application. The previous application of this type that we had for supporting, you know, people that are struggling and need food, I asked the town clerk for a report looking at the whole of Ramsgate, what the provisions are, where they are, where they're being taken up. I haven't had that report yet, or we haven't had that report yet, so I'm concerned about this, this type of application, worthy as it is, whether we've got a complete picture of what's happening in Ramsgate for this type of thing and where and who it's been provided by.
Thank you, Councillor Critten.
I'm not sure it's providing a complete picture, others may be able to help out, but I'm only aware of Newington Community Centre, which does a pay on as much as you can afford basis with their weekly meal, which I think is done on a Wednesday lunchtime. As far as I'm aware, within Ramsgate, there aren't any others and there is no limit, although this is in, on the edge of East Cliff, there's no limit to where you live within, I mean, it's generally Ramsgate, it is linked in with the same venue that they run the social supermarket from, so there is a link there with this particular event and of course, St George's is a fairly central, well-known location in the town centre on the border with Central Harbour, so that's the only other one I'm aware of is Newington.
Absolutely.
The Salvation Army run breakfast mornings as well.
There is very limited, there are very limited opportunities for access.
Councillor Evans, sir.
And I think St George's is the only place in the town centre where they literally get a fully cooked meal, a healthy cooked meal.
Councillor Evans, sir.
Yeah, I mean, councillor Critten's right, I mean, Newington does, in fact, I was there today and it is pay as much as you can. But I mean, I've got to echo what you said earlier, we've got such a small pot of money left now and it's got to go quite a long way with all, I mean, I'd like to give all of these applications money, yeah, it's all, yeah, and we've run out virtually.
Anybody else?
I would just add to what councillor Wing said, it is only breakfast and it is almost exclusively for the homeless and the heavy homeless, whereas this project is, it is for the wider community that can't afford meals, so just a subtle difference, that's all.
Okay, that's a good.
My point is, is that I don't think we have the information to, how to distribute the funding that we can get to this type of project.
Okay, we've got a decision.
May I come back briefly on that, is that we know that this has been running for some time, we know that it is the only, as far as we know from our own experience, is the only facility in the town centre and I think if there was anything else, we would know about it, because that's the nature of what's going on in Ramsgate at the moment. We know from what's here that it has been working alongside with the Our Kitchen, but it also is working along with the social enterprise, community supermarket, so I'm not quite sure what else we need to know.
Okay, I'm going to propose myself, I'm going to propose myself that we, that we give £1,500 to all of us out of the current.
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, okay, but we hold it until we get the report from the town clerk about the general picture in Ramsgate.
Is there a seconder for that? Okay, we have to vote, member first, crazy it is, but not the best, it's made of crazy out of votes, that's crazy, better, all right, you've heard councillor Green's amendment. Yeah, could I ask everybody, can you turn your phones off and, or to silence please? Thank you. So you've heard councillor Green's amendment, in favour of the amendment, please show. That was games. That's lost, thank you, so we now go to the extension, which is for, to give St George's Ramsgate Community Development Trust £1,500, all those in favour please show, that's carried, thank you.
Members, you have £3,739.5 left, I think I might forget about the 5p.
We might need that.
Could I just make a comment that, that I sort of partly want to support councillor Green in response to when an existing provision, whatever it is, when it's starting, I think people comes to present, to ask for financial support, maybe one of the questions we've got to ask them is how is it going to add value to what you already do, because are we in danger of funding activities that already exist? I just sort of leave that as maybe something that also gets discussed in future.
I'm quite happy, we just like to know that, we'll raise up town clerk and town clerk does give her apologies, unfortunately, person's got Covid, so she's got to look after the little ones, so. Okay, item three and five. No? I think I'm true.
Members, the next application.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Discovery Planet Learning Space, running costs from the end of November to the end of February, is a repeat application which was awarded £2,000 for the same thing in March, projected expenditure £4,000, grant requested £4,000, they were awarded £2,000 to allow them to operate as a learning space for three months. And they're saying that they will apply any funding that we give them to keep the money between November and February. They use the space to deliver a number of their own enriching educational activities in partnership with the University of Kent, Canterbury, Christchurch, University, Discovery Park Businesses, et cetera. Thank you, it's one that you've already seen before, it's the same.
Members, any comments? Councillor Austin?
I think they're an excellent organisation, they do some really good work, but I'm worried about them coming back to us so soon, it suggests to me that they don't have a spread of other funders that need to be sustainable.
Councillor Green, yeah.
I'm just trying to remember, we awarded them £2,000 in, I think was just said, that tells me that we were probably awarding them £2,000, I think when we had that meeting, we had something like about 10,000, so we were around 30,000, we just took £2,000 each. And the thing is that might have been a part of it.
I think you're right.
And there was a number of groups on that occasion that said, well, we'll do what we can with it, but it's not enough and they would come back to us and I think some of them may have already come back to us. What worries me about this one is what I alluded to earlier, is that the total projected expenditure is £4,000, the grant requested is £4,000, that's not a grant, that's not that shit. And we've been doing that increasingly more and more and more in the time that I've been on this council, where we've been taking 100%, giving 100% grants and I think we need to think very carefully about that, particularly in relation to the financial situation of what's left in the grant pots and I don't know, I mean, have they already moved into spending that money? Is this also retrospective or not? I don't believe, no, it's for the next quarter, there is no other funding according to the application form, they are receiving no other funding or they haven't applied for any other. Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that about the £2,000 in particular as well.
Councillor Wing.
It's probably, it's already what they need money for, is the rent, is the staffing, is the goods, right, things with, is it really to cost?
It's really them. Project manager. It's for the venue, it's, yeah, it's for the space. Venue cost is £3,000.
Can I just clarify, can I just clarify, did you say it's for a policy? Did you say it was for?
Project manager.
Project manager, so did money go towards the member staff?
It's £3,000 towards the venue, which is £1,000 a month. Project management, venue coordination, £250 per day, which is £750 and fitting new flooring to the kitchen and bathroom, which is £250, which you could allocate out of the Ramsgate fund, but they would need to possibly apply for that.
Councillor Green.
We could offer to pay for the project manager and offer them Bradford House.
Sorry, David, I didn't hear what you said, what was the last bit?
I said, we could offer to pay for the project manager and offer them space and the rest.
We don't pay.
Both of us together, I just wanted, I just wanted to ask how moving, offering from Bradford House.
Yeah, so.
Oh, sorry. All right. I mean, so this is community service and an aspect of it is actually hiring the space, which sort of worries me, that we're.
Paying people regularly, which is never going to be.
Turn the things down because. Yes, which is never going to be, make them sustainable and again, it's what I can see the paying the project manager would be adding value, so something additional would happen, whereas pay for the space is not something really additional happening, because it's their space anyway, so if we don't.
A paper star. Councillor Critten?
Yeah, I was just looking up on what's words here, it says, they have identified or are in the process of identifying.
Sorry.
Costs which enable them to deliver activities themselves, but this does not cover the core costs, which is coming back to what you were saying, and it would enable them to use that space to deliver a number of their own enriching educational activities and I'm not sure how Bradford House, if we were letting them use that space, fits in with how currently it's a high street space, so I'd need to ask them that question, I think, as to whether or not that would work for them, reading this, I'm not entirely sure it would.
Thank you.
I think you're right, I think it would, it's in the town.
Well, that's, that's actually, you want?
Where is actually the space, where, it doesn't actually stay here.
It's in the town centre.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah.
It's Discovery Planet, it's up in Ramsgate, Discovery Planet.
Okay, that's great.
On the positive side, it is a unique organisation, a real asset to the town.
Occupies shopping and stuff.
Sorry, can I just add one speaker please? Sorry, can I just add one speaker please?
And, and the past three.
Okay.
It would be a shame if it failed it.
Um, anybody else, any other comments want to make? Anyone want to make a proposal?
Yeah.
Crichton.
I'll, I'll throw that out. Um, that we uh, do two thousand.
Is there a second for that?
One second though.
That's a hard set. Okay, members.
Could I ask how much that would be this big effort? Not much. And five pence. And five, the five definitely got five here. What are we gonna do with five pence?
Why don't you just make it two thousand and five pence?
We could, I'm just, I'll see that.
Just clear that bit, make the maths easier.
One thousand seven hundred and thirty nine pounds and five.
No. We have a proposal, a second, uh, for two thousand pounds to be given to, uh, these.
Can I just ask, if, if this proposal falls, can we recommend a lower amount?
Absolutely. Recommend what you like, recommend a higher amount if that's what you wanted to. All, all those in favour, please show. One, two, three, four. All those gains. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, that falls.
Could I propose one thousand and five pence?
And propose one thousand and five pence, it might sound a bit detrimental. Uh, so I, I would suggest just a thousand, if you want to propose anything, propose a thousand pound. Is there a second for that?
Yes.
Councillor Austin. Any discussion on that, members? No, that's a green.
Are we against offering them space in Bradford?
No, but I think that's a separate, that would be a separate matter. Obviously, you're asking for money and not space, so um, we can always do that separately. Um, so proposal a second for, that we have for a thousand pound? Any favour of us? No, any, um, members in your own favour, please show. Six, seven, eight, nine. That's carried. Okay. That's carried, thank you. Oh, that's that one, sorry. You know why I did that, because it doesn't show. Any old road up.
Any old road.
Next one, next one, members.
Members, the balance is two thousand seven hundred and thirty nine pounds and five pence.
Yeah.
Okay, this is a returning application, originally uh, went to lost council under the Ramsgate Fund. It is for staffing. They were, um, resolution was, the Ramsgate Fund does not fund staffing due to concerns that this creates dependency. The applicant will be asked to consider if there's other expenditure that the council could support or if staffing is the only option to reapply to the community grant budget, which they have now done. This is United Mothers, English as a Second Language, um, Lessons for Migrant Families. Uh, the total uh, expenditure would be twenty six thousand seven hundred and thirty. They are asking for three and a half thousand. You only have two thousand seven hundred and thirty nine left. Thank you.
Members, any discussion? That's a green.
Just one comment. The corner, the corner is not in the town, it's in Norfolk.
Sorry, can you say that again?
The corner is not in the.
Ah, no, it's in, yeah. That's Rossley.
Uh, just to reiterate what I think I said when we discussed before, which is this is the kind of project that will be funded by the government, and it's entirely down to governance cuts. This is not happening, which is essential for the integration of new communities in, in Ramsgate.
That's what I think too.
Echo what councillor Austin says, this is a very worthy project. It's, uh, the outcomes seem to be very good. It's based at the Corner Hub, which offers a lot of other services as well. And, uh, yeah, I mean, I would like to give you more money, but we haven't got it.
Yeah, they do actually operate also out of St George's Church on occasions as well.
Any other comments, members? Uh, councillor Crichton.
Are we still being asked to fund staffing?
Yes.
About the same budget?
Town of the, um.
Community. Okay, is there a proposer at all?
What should we get then?
Two seven three nine and five pence. Forget the five pence. Two seven three nine.
That's a thousand pounds.
Second up, that's everything.
How much was that?
Thousand.
Thousand.
All those in favour, please show. That's carried, thank you. It's the last one on that. Now we move on to item three of five. And uh, there we are.
Uh, members, we've um, had our accounts for financial year up to March twenty twenty three. Um, all cleared by the external auditor. Um, Diego has been presented to you, um, and it's for you to note, please.
Any comments, members? And we thank you for your due diligence in relation to the accounts.
Right down to the last five, please.
Yes, indeed. So, members, this is for noting, if there's no more comments, uh, members agreed to note this. Hello, anyone awake there? You, are, are you happy to agree this?
Yeah.
Thank you. No, I wasn't just looking at you, councillor, the whole side. I, I heard nothing from you. Item four.
You've pitched my agenda.
Have I? Oh, sorry. What have you got here?
I saw I got another one. Just as well.
No, it's off the front. Oh, anyway, doesn't matter. Um, item four is to consider a recommendation from the town promotion committee that the council wires ten thousand seven hundred pound from the project budget for three thousand six hundred pound for two days of relocating palms. The dreaded palms, at uh, eighteen hundred pound uh, per day to Young's Nurseries, who are our local specialists. Four thousand five hundred pound for operators and digging twelve times holes and planting twelve times mature palms. One thousand pound to hire a digger, dump a truck and grab away approximately. Uh, six hundred pound for plant feed plus tree watering tubes times twelve and a thousand pound for suitable bedding plants such as seedum or flocks. Uh, evidently good choices for pollinators and droughts. Uh, and a reorganisation of the palms included planting in the ground for twelve will reduce amount annual maintenance costs by approximately in the region of eight thousand pound. Members, councillor Crichton.
Yeah, um, I just, I think I need to check with, um, the deputy town clerk. Um, but uh, as far as I can recall, um, Dean did come back with some figures that uh, we can wire across, or we need the town promotion budgets towards this. And so that fifty thousand seven hundred is something less than that.
Um, I, the town clerk did say that, um, you won't actually know until the end of the year how you stand with your budget, so she's quite concerned about committing from the town promotion budgets as they are, we've still got six months to go.
Yeah.
Um, that's her concern. Um, Dean, you did have an idea, a rough idea, didn't you, of what you could, please?
There's free budget headings that we can't foresee, but obviously there could be unforeseen. There's nine hundred in the website budget, three thousand in the WIC budget and two thousand in the marketing budget. So it'd be five thousand nine hundred.
I mean, my own view really is that we should be just deal with the issue and, and, and I think we should seriously know what the town clerk is saying with that. And so I think just ask members to bear that in mind when we're, when you're deliberating on this. Councillor Green.
I mean, this proposal makes financial sense.
Yeah.
And it puts the palms into the ground where they'll be healthier.
Absolutely.
Uh, and it saves eight thousand pounds a year in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed. Great.
It's sort of like a context at least. If we don't do this, then the entirety of our beautification budget will be spent on watering palms. So it really is quite ridiculous. Um, and what we spend in this one payment will save that every year. More than that every year. So, um, yeah, please.
Um, sorry.
Members, you are being asked to fund this from the project budget, which is like new projects. It's a completely separate project, um, budget, which is, is set aside for this sort of thing.
Five pence.
Enough, councillor Green.
Sufficient.
Sufficient.
Secondary, secondary councillor Crichton. Uh, any other comments, members? All in favour, please show. That's carried, thank you. Item six, moving on swiftly as it says, uh, tall ships regatta. And why haven't you, why haven't I been on item six?
You're on five.
Oh, I'm not bothered about that. All right, I was just moving, trying to move on a bit sharp. Um, okay, item five is to receive a comparison quote of electricity prices and consider which one to choose. All quotes are for the supplier of one hundred percent renewable electricity as per the current supply. Can we level that, what the prices are, so that we, members can?
Yeah, I've spoken to the town clerk. Um, we are now a week out of contract and I have seen a difference in, um, just the allotments, the electric have gone up from fifteen to twenty two pounds a month. So that's quite a leap. Um, but it's, I love, the town clerk, um, told me, so we may need to fire. And I do know the custom house electricity budget has, um, it's almost used unfortunately. So we do need to look at that. And, um, she will bring a report back to councillors, um, but will liaise with chair and vice chair of finance, finance, FNGP Committee.
Yeah.
So, um, our current annual contract, which is gone, was seven thousand seven hundred and eighty seven sixty two. Um, you've got a list there. I don't know if you can, can you see these? It's this sheet here.
Got that.
Um, I, unfortunately, I don't know a lot about electricity or anything. I just pay the bills.
Can kill ya.
So you've got se- uh, several, um, options to recommend you. Um, our, our people that look at, um, this for us, ESS, are saying that Ecotricity are now the most competitive over all three terms, twelve, twenty four and thirty six months. Since last quotes, we have seen increases in pricing due to the escalations in Israel, I don't know, as well as suspected deliberate damage to a key gas pipeline, blah, blah, blah. Um, Ecotricity offer a hundred percent renewable source contract, which is taken solely from wind, solar and hydro. Um, Ecotricity, okay, twelve months, um, would be so, just under thirteen and a half thousand. Twenty four months, a little bit less, thirteen two. And thirty six months, it would be roughly twelve eight. So, and last time you did opt for a thirty six months contract. Um, and I can see that E- Ecotricity is the most competitive.
I suppose we accept the Ecotricity quote for.
Second.
Thirty six months? For thirty six months?
Thirty six months, thank you.
Councillor Crichton, second. Any other, anybody else want to comment on this tour? No? All those in favour, please show. That's carried, thank you. Now we will go for the tall ships, item six. Um, members, I, I had a discussion, uh, with the town clerk in relation to the tall ships. And, um, what, what was clear as, and my concern was, uh, initially was that there was no proposals put to Slannet District Council yet. We must decide whether they will allow it or not. It's not our harbour, it's, it's Slannet District Council's harbour. Um, however, um, I agree with, uh, the town clerk that she should contact miss, Mr Byrne and, um, who subsequently sent in, and you should, you should all have the copy of his, uh, email. Um, my own view, and I would like to propose this, is that we do accept this, uh, this in principle. I thought, I don't think there's anybody in this room or anybody in the town probably who wouldn't want the tall ships coming into the harbour. Um, but we accept it in principle, subject obviously to, we know what the detail is. Um, because we can't support it until we have the detail of it and, and to see what, and to see what, see what it is. Um, obviously, some of the issues that they've, that they've raised here in relation to uh, the benefit of the local economy, how many, how many visitors they have, well, that's conjecture. You know, um, you can base that on where the, where they hold, where there's been one in, um, uh, down in Co- Falmouth. Um, but it's a different, it's a different environment, it's a, it's a different, it's a different issue. So I think, um, all told, I think that is what we should do. So I'm gonna propose that.
I wanted to ask a question.
Go on then.
Um, in, I mean, I, I do think there's a lot of information lacking in this email. Um, but one of the things that concerned me most at the end, it's, it talks about the vital role that Ramsgate Town Council must play. And I just wondered what vital role had already, was in life. What is the vital role that we will be playing?
I don't know what that is, um.
So I mean, I don't want to commit to something that.
There isn't, you know, we haven't got a vital, we haven't got a vital role. At the end of the day, it's Slannet District Council. Sorry, sir, I can't take you. You're not part of the committee. Um, we can't, Slannet District Council is the vital role. We can offer support. We can offer that. And, um, we can, we could also, at the time, if, if this council decides once we have all of the information of how they're gonna do it, what they're gonna do, what their, what their budgets are, blah, blah, blah. And it's support and, and Slannet District Council says, yes, we will support this if we do it. Then we can offer our full support to it, so we can put that out on our website, we can put whatever it is that, we can put whatever it is that we desire. So it's a principle that, that they're offering or, or that, that they're giving us to support. Because there isn't any definition in it. As you can see from the emails, there's no definition, there's a lot of supposition, but there's no def- definition of it. So I'm still proposing that we would, that we should support this in principle. And it's up to, it's up to members, whether there's a second, do you have a second for that at all? Councillor Hetherington. Members?
Could I just?
Of course.
I, I mean, there is a lot of information missing, which is why, I mean, we often have people that come and talk to us about things. Uh, I think we've had the Ramsgate Society, we've had the two hundred anniversary. So the reason, I, I personally would like to hear, uh, would love to see a presentation as a non-criminal presentation that might help us fill some of the gaps, but also give us an opportunity to ask questions, to try and fill those gaps in. And I think that can all be done without us actually, you know, committing anything apart from just, just, uh, being prepared to listen to, to the proposal.
When the proposal beefed up and we have something to really listen to that's not supposition, uh, same as, same as Manchester Airport, it's all supposition. It's all, it's all what we can do and what we can't do and what we, we will do, but there's no substance to it. So it's the same for this, there's no substance to it. Once the substance is, more than happy. Come and give us a, come and give us a talk, come and give us what you, what you wanna do and how you wanna do it. More than happy with that. But until they come up with that substance in it, it's not a go as far as I'm concerned. Yeah, proposal on the table. Um, anyone else want to speak?
Can we hear the wording of the proposal?
Yeah.
By Ramsgate Town Council supports in principle, this idea, subject to the detail.
Members, all in favour, please show. That's Carrie, thank you. Well, item seven is a motion, debate not hate campaign. This is to consider a motion from the Central Harbour Wall councillors, which is councillor Austin, councillor Wing, that the council sign up to the debate not hate campaign, then report accompanies the motion.
I should say, it's also on behalf of councillor Ara, but it's your party, obviously.
Okay, okay. So, I think what I'd like to do, was to pass over to you for your, if you want to propose...
This is covered from the Local Government Association, and we know we've got an election coming up, but certainly I do repeatedly fill in the LGA issues to do with harassment and poor behaviour with councillors. And having read it, it seems to be more directed at harassment and bullying and possibly hate crime directed at councillors from residents and other bodies. But I think it's reasonable, and certainly asking to the election candidate for the Greens in 2019. And I can sit here and tell you that I received a great deal of inappropriate behaviour, bullying and harassment, mainly from other people linked to other parties. And we made the decision as a party to not retaliate. And we certainly made the decision not to make things personal. So I think I would like, and I do witness, as in my councillor role, behaviours that would never be acceptable in any other work environment, sometimes directed at individuals who, who happened to be in, in parties that you're not members of. And we do have some contentious issues. So I remember the meeting that a councillor left to do with Manston, and as soon as the M-word's mentioned, it leaves me cold. Everybody knows that I'm never going to fly again, and I'm totally anti-Manston, but I, I do respect the fact that other people have a different view. And I think it is important that we listen to different views and we try to respond in a way which respects those different views. So I think this is just about us adopting something that really we should, we should all be doing anyway. You know, I, I think I'm probably as guilty as, as, as some people sometimes for getting overly enthusiastic in the way I speak and maybe treat people. So I'm, I'm, I'm actually committing myself to this as well, whether we agree to it or not.
I think if I was to suggest there, I think from all sides, you know, we all get it, you know, I get loads. You know, extreme abuse sometimes. And so it is there, it is there, it's there in central government. You know, they get, they're too, at least in relation to hate, to hating or whatever. And I have to say, at Thannick District Council's full council meeting last week, last, last Thursday, the people sitting behind our councillors, the public behind them, who were swearing, calling people out, calling them etcetera, etcetera. And I think some of them were related to the Greens. And I don't mean that...
No, they totally were not.
Are you saying that?
They absolutely were not.
That's good then, that's, that's good. But what I was trying to say, eh? I was just making a point, I was just making a point, that it doesn't matter what party you're in, doesn't matter what party you're in, you will get, if they don't like what you're saying, someone's going to be barracking, going to be doing, doing whatever. I mean, personally, I support this, and I think it's something, the only thing that I would say is that in relation to some of the things that are in the lower part, the end part of the motion, are things that are already in place for Ramsgate Town Council and at Thannick District Council about taking care of it. And we all know we can report to the police if we need to, you know, none of us are stupid. Much as, most of our, some of our public believe we are, but we're not. And we do work hard and we do put a lot of time and effort into what we do. And, and I think that tends to get lost when it comes to public. Councillor Austin first, and then councillor Heatherington, and then councillor Critton, and then councillor Green.
I think the point about this is not that we don't already have rules, regulations, things that we've signed up to and whatever. It's about us endorsing this, being seen to endorse it, recommending it to ourselves, but also recommending it out there. So we're saying, this is what we're signing up to. And we are setting ourselves a standard of behaviour that we would also hope to see amongst our colleagues in our respective parties, et cetera, in and out of the council chamber, but also that we would expect to see from residents. So we don't expect to get abuse from residents, in the same way that we defend our staff and the bins or whatever against abuse from residents.
Because we wouldn't do it to our residents, would we?
We wouldn't do it the other way. And so it's about us setting ourselves a standard and saying, this is how we are going to try and behave, and we expect the others to be seen likewise.
Cool. Councillor Heatherington?
Yeah, I mean, we already have the Nolan principles, and I mean, with public office, and this presumably is that, I mean, I'm quite happy to sign up to this, I think it's sort of helpful to have that reinforced. Because we have all of us, I suppose, you know, online and in various other ways, although it's very difficult to know how you can stop it online, being subject to a lot of unpleasant comments on occasions, yeah.
Absolutely. Well, people will say things online, they won't say...
Indeed, yes, indeed, yeah.
Hang on, councillor, I've got councillor Critton, didn't he?
I just wanted to say, I have, I realise that the link to the debate not hate campaign is on, the website is on in the article. I haven't had the opportunity to look at it. However, I, I think we all know the work of the LGA and that it's very, very trustworthy. So on that basis, I'm quite happy to, with the recommendation, to sign up to the debate not hate campaign. But like councillor Orville was saying, I'm not quite sure about the bullet points, because the last four, I think we're already doing. And it's not actually a part of the recommendation. So, you know, there is, would we like to, because it does say in addition, this council resolves too, but that's above the recommendation. So I, I mean, I'm happy to sign up to debate not hate, but I'm not too struck on the bullet points, because I just think that that's, I'm sorry. Because we're already, I think in, in our policies that are regularly reviewed, we're already there and doing it, that's...
Okay. Councillor Green?
I just wanted to say something about our staff that look after the allotments and their allotment reps. For some reason, they do appear to get quite a bit of the piss. I don't know why, but they do.
Is that from other allotment holders?
Generally speaking, from other allotment holders. So I think, I mean, I'm quite happy to adopt, to adopt this. I don't agree particularly with the writing to Member of Parliament.
That ain't going to get anywhere, is it?
But the other bullet points, if they're not in a, in a policy already, we should ask the clerk to put a policy together.
Yeah, they are in...
That includes them.
They are in our constitution.
But in particular, we need to be aware that certainly in the allotment area, our staff and allotment reps are already...
Yeah, to answer that, I think as, as, obviously we've got our new member of staff starting shortly. I'll be meeting with her as well as the, the town clerk, and it's something that, you know, obviously I'm the one that comes to if people are not doing their allotments to say, we're taking it away from you. And that's something as well, I think what we would do is to take it away from.
With the allotments, termination of allotments used to be down to myself or Dean, whoever was looking after the allotments at the time. And council quite a few years ago took that away from officers. So the, the actual act of terminating a tenancy sits with the chair or allocated member of council to help protect
Yes.
the staff a little bit, but we do get occasional abuse, but our new lady will not be on her own. She's got, she will have full support.
Absolutely, absolutely. Councillor Critton then?
Yeah, just possibly correct.
Sorry, councillor.
It's all right. I just want to go back. I can categorically say that I don't think there were any Green Party members or supporters.
That's just what I was told, anyway, but I just used it as a, I just used it as an idea.
The nearest to that, and, and when one of them shouted out, "We can't hear", you couldn't hear at the back. And that was the chair's responsibility to actually tell the members of the party.
I agree.
Never happened. And actually, one councillor said, "Well, listen then", which was a very rude comment to the people in the gallery from the councillor, and I'm not going to say who that councillor was, because that would be unfair. But you can't hear at the back, you can't hear the chair at the back. So that is, that is something that I intend to take up with TDC, and it's the chair's responsibility to control them, because we had to listen to all...
I think that the, the acoustics
Are very bad.
in there are not good. But we're not going to go into that, anyway.
I just wanted to possibly correct myself from earlier, because I'm just thinking, listening to councillor Green, we do have all the clear policies in place for our staff. But actually, do we have them in for ourselves as well? Because actually, I'm, I'm thinking about it, and quite possibly we don't. We don't protect ourselves, because we put ourselves up for election, we put ourselves out, out in the front, and we expect to get battered for it.
I think it's worth asking.
So I think it is worth actually asking the town clerk to make sure, I know some things we've been incorporated into, but maybe not all of this, so it is worth asking the town clerk.
Anybody else got anything to say?
I've worked since becoming councillor, and I haven't seen any form of risk assessment against the four councillors, per se.
Yeah.
That's quite an important thing.
Councillor Wing?
Staff should have a risk assessment on the roles they're doing.
Yeah.
I think part of the hate, sorry, I was going to say hate, not debate, debate not hate for me is clearly we need to have a better understanding of each other, and I cannot remember at RTC ever filling in any form of paperwork that would, that would give somebody an idea of who's got a potential disability in the room and might need additional support, how we want to identify ourselves, how we want to be referred to. I'm not just criticizing Ramsgate Town Council, because I haven't filled anything in for TDC either, and I think that's a problem. And I also think that as, as a council, we should be, and I've said this at TDC, we certainly should be doing some equality and diversity training to have a better understanding of any minorities that might be sat in this group with us, or minorities you might work with. And we should certainly be doing some safeguarding training as well. And it's not just about using it, being out there, because we all deal with vulnerable people and we all deal with minorities on a daily basis, and some of us are lucky enough to have had that training, and it does need to be updated on a regular basis. So I certainly feel that as a council, we should be looking at those two aspects of it.
I know what, I know what you're saying, because in, in your general work, you know, I always ask my two colleagues, one of my two colleagues to come in if I'm going to see a woman on their own, because you know, you're open to all kinds, all kinds of things, and it's not, not that you don't, I say, but you need to, you need to have that protection, yeah. And also, it's, you know, it would be a bit of a place, and some people get uptight and you don't know whether they're going to, whatever it is. So you do need to be aware of it. So, yeah, there are, there are, I think we can raise that with the town clerk back in training and stuff, so.
But also identifying people's needs. So I'll sit here and say, I, I, I am quite dyslexic, so you'll never get me reading from a script. Now, nobody's ever asked me that information, and there could be other people in this room that have particular delivery styles or, or access needs. None of us have ever been asked about that. It's the issue at TDC where some people don't want to stand up, you actually have to have a reason not to stand up, and you have to declare it in public. It's totally embarrassing. So I definitely think...
It doesn't have to be, you can declare, I'll not be going on to TDC somehow, but you have to declare that.
It's here that there should be some sort of form that we should have filled in when we first got elected, which details all of that identity stuff and need stuff that you would do in other areas of work.
Yeah, but if I could, if I could just say, it's not other areas of work, and, and I think because of the smallness of the size of us, that if anybody has any, they should talk to the town clerk. You know, as an individual, she's, we all love our clerk, and I think that's the way that we should, that we should go. If anybody has got any particular issues or problems, you know, some of us may have mental health issues, we don't know, because people won't talk about that per se, but...
I can say to members, we have had a partially cited member of council years ago, which we looked after him really well, his, his agendas were in huge print, et cetera, et cetera. So we're not adverse to assisting members at all. But it is something to raise with the town clerk, because actually we wait for you to come to us to tell us, so maybe we need to come to you for you to tell us.
I'm, I'm not being critical, no, it's, it's, it seems to, it seems we seem to be putting the cart before the horse, and I reckon, or some of this needs to be gathered. And I think it's important for us to understand issues around diversity. I mean, are we, are we a diverse group of people? Nobody knows. Nobody knows whether we're diverse.
But I mean, that's, but it doesn't matter, does it? I think we're all adults, we're all, you know, none of us are eighteen in here, are we? Well, apart from councillor Green. But, but, and, and, you know, you can talk, you can talk, you know, none of us are afraid of talking, are we? You can go and talk to the town clerk and say, this is an issue for me, what can you do about it? And I think that's, but we're getting off the dinghy now, councillor Green?
Well, I just wanted to ask, going to say, the useful discussion should come forward as an alternative, in my opinion. I don't have another agenda, but it's not, it's not the agenda that we're talking about.
No. So can I have a proposal, please?
I post that we accept a recommendation to sign up to the debate not hate campaign. Secondly.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favour, please show. That's Carrie, thank you. Bullet points? Well, that's part of it, so you just all agreed there?
No, it says in addition.
Oh, it's in addition, is it? Okay. Yeah, okay, we'll, yeah, we'll talk to the town, yeah, if we can, I'll let you put that down and we'll deal with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, moving on to item eight is cliff lift. This has been removed from the I've, I've asked the town clerk to let members know that the, the reason I've asked for it to be removed and for it to come back to council is because it is being discussed tomorrow at the Cabinet Court Management Team meeting. I will not take part in that discussion as the, as the chair of the council, because it's too close to, I'd have to declare an interest in it, so I'm not, I'm not going to take part in that. We've made, so we're waiting to see what comes back. I'm not going to go into the details, there's no need to discuss it. We're waiting for it to come back to see what, see what TDC, their final offer is effectively. Okay, so I don't want to discuss it any further than that, and it'll come back for members. Sorry about that, but it will come back. Councillor Green?
I was just going to ask if TDC is aware of our position.
Yes. They've been aware of our position. What I can say is the town clerk has been dealing with the head of service, who's responsible for the lift and the and the concession, and there are issues relating to that which are not acceptable to the town clerk and myself. And that is what I want resolved for, because otherwise, otherwise it, it could well make it unacceptable, unacceptable. So, once I get that information, we can get it, we will come back, we'll come back to be at the next council. And we'll move on to item nine, which is active Ramsgate. And to receive a port from Simon in relation to the Ramsgate project manager seeking approval for a market research project, the funding for which... for a market research project, the funding for which is we did the Active Ramsgate activities budget.
Can I just?
Yes.
The town clerk asked me to advise you that this has come before you because the eight thousand pounds is above our email. Okay, thank you.
Do you like to?
Intro it.
Intro it, yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
I'll send up to you, you'll go to it, or... Yes, this is something we, the work we have identified as top priority going forward. I've come into this up through the year, and with the new role, I've been given a new brief to try and target specific audiences to make Active Ramsgate as effective as possible going forward. So that's, one of the priorities is to try and answer that question of which audience we hit in. And then to make the most of how we're marketing this to those audiences. Whilst Active Ramsgate has grown over ten years, and we've got good, some different activities, we don't have anything, you know, over our chief. We don't have hard evidence, for example, which of our portfolio activities are the biggest draws to different people we want to bring in. So that's one of the first questions it answers. The second one is that it's really about trying to measure our promotional work going forward. Again, this is something we don't have solidly in place, and haven't had over ten years. Because a lot of the work in the past ten years has been about trying new things, building a portfolio, to more or less success. But we've now, we've not got anything in place to keep measuring it across the board, and to know which are the most effective activities. I hope that makes sense. There's a lot of dependencies, this has been a lot of my work to sort of get this together. So I appreciate there's a lot to plough through, but I'm here for any questions on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Shaun. Members?
It's not a question, but just to reiterate that when Simon started, one of the first things that we asked him to do from the Town Promotion Committee, or from the Active Ramsgate Working Group, shall I say, was to actually undertake the research, the groundwork. And so those of you may remember that when we decided to change over to a full-time as a staff instead of the contractors, that we, it would be an interim period where there would be preparation to rebuild into a new way of working, if you like, more than anything else. The, you know, the project was running well, but we just needed a fresh look on it. And this is actually an integral part of the work that we've asked Simon to do. It is, as has been said, it's the fact that this is a big lump sum within, but it is within the budget for Active Ramsgate, and has been targeted within the costings to stay within that budget. So, thank you.
Okay, members, so the recommendation is to ask you to consider to approve the expenditure of eight thousand pounds to undertake the proposed market research work, agreeing to the appointment of Destination Research in the first instance to deliver this work, and agreeing to hold Tourism South East in reserve as a supplier to be appointed in any case of force majeure that might prevent Destination Research from accepting or delivering the work. Any further comment, members? Proposal?
Propose?
As the recommendation?
Second.
Second. All in favour, please show? That's carried, thank you. Members, that is the end of the meeting. And the date and time of the next meeting is Wednesday, the twenty ninth of November, at seven p.m. And finished at eight fourteen p.m. Thank you, members, thank you, members of the public for watching. If you have a fellow, please, thank you.